I'd like to call this meeting to order for the regular session of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for August 8, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Felka?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on our actions today? Thank you. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or amended.
So moved?
Second.
And moved and seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The agenda is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? Is there anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved? Second?
Been moved and seconded? Veder?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payments today are $391,377.81 and $81.81. And the 60-40 fund, we are paying a large amount this time, $40,045.50. And that includes six months payment for one of the staff... Oh, can't remember. Geiger, and I can't tell you, can't remember where she's from now. Department of Correctional Services, yeah. Yes, and not too many large payments this time. We are purchasing one van for the sheriff's office and paying for one drum mulcher more. Other than that, everything looks routine and appears to be in order, unless you have any questions.
Seeing none, well, please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Item four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Just a brief update on the roads. This morning, our bridge crew is out working on Union Road this morning. This is just north of the Cedar Falls city limits. We have two structures as you go through the curves going to the north out of Cedar Falls, and we are doing some patching on the bridge deck on the South Bridge. We have the road closed to one lane, and we anticipate this going on for several mornings this week. We're using a new Rapid Set product to patch some of those holes on that bridge deck. The gravel roads are in fairly rough shape throughout the county right now because it's been so dry and we haven't been able to be out there. Now that we got some moisture over the weekend, the blade operators are out there on the gravel road system. If we continue to get a bit more moisture in the coming weeks, the condition of the gravel roads will improve. And then finally, pointer road, and we are coming into the home stretch on that bridge. The contractor has about 10 to 12 more working days left. It seems they will probably take all of the working days, so we anticipate that being complete within a couple of weeks yet. Weather depending. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room to... for an update? Anyone online for an update? Seeing none, we'll move on to the minutes approved for August 1, 2023.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Minutes are approved. Item six, consent agenda. The following items are acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion unless someone from the board requests it.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded? There's nothing to be removed. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Item seven, contracts and agreements. Resolution that the contract between Blackhawk County and Permar Security Services, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, for security services for the courthouse and Pinecrest facilities with a bid for the courthouse at a cost of $427,748.75 and Pinecrest Building at a cost of $142,542.40 for a three-year term be awarded and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Rory Givens, facilities director.
So moved?
Second.
Are there any questions for Rory? Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Item B, resolution that the best bid received from NeoGov to four applicant tracking, sorry, and onboarding system software with an implementation and training support cost of $5,000 and annual subscription rate of $10,087 for year one, $15,310.50 for year two, and $20,174 for year three as recommended by Amanda Fesenmeyer, HR Director.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded? Are there any questions, or is there anything you'd like to say, Amanda, about this?
Just that this was brought to Al and I's attention last winter that our current applicant tracking system, Civic HR, would be sunsetting and was purchased by Criterion. And so we had the option then to look at a couple of different alternatives for applicant tracking. NeoGov is definitely a leader in public sector, and they're very similar bids. I think the total difference of the three years is about $400, but with the integration to our payroll system is what really kind of elevated our interest administratively when it comes to posting jobs and also onboarding applicants into new hires, but then also the recruiting platform being tied directly with an RSS feed to governmentjobs.com indeed to really kind of enhance our presence on some of these key areas where candidates are looking to join public sector roles, so.
Okay, thank you. If there are no questions for Amanda, please answer as your name is called.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, resolution that the agreement between Blackhawk County and JJR Investments LLC, owned by JJR Investments LLC, situated at 829 Sycamore Street, Waterloo, Iowa, for the sum of $325,000 and that it be recorded with the county recorder, approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Rory Givens, facilities director.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Givens, you have some comments?
Yes, good morning, Board. Rory Givens, facilities director. This request is the purchase of... be the former Raymount Towing Facility, which is connected to our Juvenile Court Services Facility. It is just shy of 11,000 square feet. This facility, future use would be to house critical equipment that the county uses, primarily snow removal equipment, vehicles and such. So, yeah, we are excited to get some of these investments that the county has made indoors with the hopes to preserving its life and extending that. So if there's any other questions, thank you very much.
Any questions? All right. Please answer as your name is called.
Adam Sheer.
Oh, yes.
I have a question. It sounded like you said something about recording with the county recorder. I don't...
And I think that was a misprint. I think that was not supposed to be included.
Oh, okay.
So it should have just ended with the sum of $325,000 and that it be approved and direct the chair to sign.
Okay.
So thank you for catching that.
Thank you. All right. Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Moving on to other business. This is a resolution to approve the 28E agreement between Blackhawk County and the City of Cedar Falls, defining the cooperation between the county and the city for the upcoming road reconstruction of Viking Road be approved as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Kathy?
Yeah, just to refresh your memories, this is the portion of Viking Road in Cedar Falls in the 6,000 block over to South Union Road, and Cedar Falls wants to improve it. And I've been placing this in our five-year plan for the last few years. We agreed to... or we figured that we could participate up to the cost of what we would spend if we were repaving a county road. So at that time, we figured $225,000. As we know, costs have gone up. The new project cost for Cedar Falls is $7.6 million. We agreed that... well, they asked if we could contribute $350,000. We thought that that was reasonable. They have since included a culvert that we weren't anticipating replacing the first time. So this year, we have budgeted in our FY '23 budget, we have budgeted $325,000... excuse me, our FY '24 budget. And then FY '25, we will budget the remainder $25,000 to give them $350,000, if you agree.
Are there any questions for Kathy? Any more questions? Or any questions, I guess? She gave us the information, so... Okay, thank you. If not, please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Item B, resolution to approve the Articles of Amendment to Consolidated Public Safety Communications 28E Agreement, as approved by the Oversight Board on 28th day of June 2023 by and between Blackhawk County, the City of Waterloo, the City of Cedar Falls, the City of Evansdale, the City of Hudson, the City of LaPorte, City of Dunkerton, and the City of Gilbertville.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, and I think everybody from the discussion points familiar with the action that we all took, and it was unanimous of our board at that time. So if there are no further questions or comments, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Item C, discussion on possible board action to approve the agreement between Blackhawk County and HKG Solutions for online benefit enrollment software at an annual cost of $21,260 for year one, $17,760 for year two, and $17,760 for year three, as recommended by Amanda Fesenmeyer, HR Director and Perspective Consulting.
So moved?
Second.
Great.
Okay, so again, another topic that we discussed during budget time, and this is a... it's not something that's currently been budgeted, but we discussed using the self-insurance fund for the health insurance. That's where a lot of our administrative fees come out. But it was brought to us from our consultants, from another client's request, to basically improve the enrollment of our benefits for employees, their dependents, and then also on the backend for processing for human resources and payroll. So this was just an opportunity to explore a more digital system to right now what is very much a manual process done by paper and a lot of communication and checking and verifying. So I thought it was a good time because we did change with Wellmark, and they have been kind of asking about the status of whether we're going to move forward with an online enrollment or continue a paper process. What I like about E's is that you can see on the pricing page here, it includes all of our benefits for the file feeds. So instead of us going into, you know, six different vendors to enter the same database, social security numbers for one employee and their dependents, we're able to provide this online platform for the employee to fill it out instead of on a piece of paper. They can do it from their home. Oftentimes, we have people that have to go home, get the social security numbers and the information. We are typically kind of waiting for that information to come to us, so this is just a more user-friendly option. And, you know, for today, Mike has looked at the agreement. We've had kind of discussions about insurance. They have been agreeable to his modifications. I don't have the final contract today, but we are expecting to receive that, and they were agreeable to what he requested to be changed. There is a year one, two, or three option. It's pretty minimal in the chart in the, you know, fees of about $1,000 difference. But if we, you know, were to have this approved, we would start with new hires, qualifying events like births, marriages, things like that, and then we would set it up for open enrollment in May.
And that was what my question. I wondered when you wanted to set it up for, what would be the dates for that?
Yep. Wellmark would like us to, you know, set it up in the, you know, near future or have a decision so that we can move forward now that we're kind of through the whole implementation from preferred one to Wellmark. But we thought it was a good time since we're through across the boards, we're through kind of the Irene frenzy that is July 1, and... but, yep.
So is it critical or is it important that we approve the agreement now? Or I know you said you could do it any day, but as far as has Mike had a chance to review the agreement, or is there anything like that we need to do that we do typically before we would go ahead and approve it?
I don't believe so. I think he's had a chance to review and provide feedback. The only thing would be if they disagreed, but Stacy was up here yesterday for our annual benefit review. She said that they were agreeable to any of the feedback and...
Yeah, assuming what they come back with is exactly what we requested, then I would consider it reviewed. I'll obviously take a look at it when we get it back.
So would we like to make that motion for approving the agreement subject to review or contingent on review of that, or what would be best, or just wait?
We've got a motion.
Amanda, you think it's going to be here within a week or so, or don't you really know?
Um, it shouldn't be too long, no. I just provided all the changes Friday. We had... kind of gave my good...
Yep.
... window, but it should be back to us here soon.
I would expect.
Is there... is there a problem if we just table it for a week?
No, I mean, that's fine. Either way.
Yeah, there is a motion on the floor, but like you said, as far as the...
I would... if it would be all right, though, if we knew for... is... could we do a three-year agreement or at least a two-year agreement? I kind of want to just some direction on that for the contract. Usually, we do three-year agreements, but...
And it sounded like that was probably... I mean, that makes sense to do it that way, too, for our benefit. And like you said, it's out of the funding, and that benefits our employees, so I think it's great change, so... no. Three, I don't know, three years? Is there any discussion among the board to do differently? Were three going to be...
I like three.
Yeah, I would just do three years and just... I'm fine approving it today, just pending final review. I think we're...
And could you come back to us in a week, I guess, just to kind of give us that update?
Yeah.
Because I think, as Tom's mentioned before, sometimes we say that we're going to do that and don't get reminded of it, follow up on it, so that'd be great.
Yep, I'll be back next week just to give an update, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll do resolution votes. That's all right with everyone?
Hmm.
Please answer as your name is called.
The resolution is to approve a contingent on... or subject to Mike's review of the final language. Yes?
Yes, thank you.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Leyland?
Yes. Thank you.
Moving on to item D, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 on Tuesday, August 22 at the Blackhawk County Courthouse on the proposed purchase of two single axle dump trucks and one tandem axle dump truck for the Blackhawk County Engineers Department.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Kathy, did you want to address that?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few words about this since we are changing the way we're bidding our dump trucks currently. I sent you a lengthy email about some of the changes in the way Freightliner is marketing their trucks. There are fewer businesses who are able to sell us trucks currently. I don't... we don't know if this will be permanent, but it seems like they are switching to more of a territorial model, similar to what mortar graders are. We're only seeing one vendor who will sell us trucks at this time. And then we would like to maximize what we can receive from our... from a trade-in by splitting our bids, by going to a chassis and a snow equipment, separating those bids. So today, I'm just asking for a public hearing for three dump truck chassis, and then we'll worry about... probably in another month, I'll come back and ask for the snowplow equipment as a separate bid. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you. This is a motion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item E, motion that the reappointment of Jerry Hagaman as a representative for the county recorder on Blackhawk County Compensation Board be approved effective July 1, 2023.
So moved?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item F, motion that the reappointment of Steve Bruskin as a representative for the county sheriff on the Blackhawk County Compensation Board be approved effective July 1, 2023.
So moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item G, discussion on the local option sales and services tax referendum anticipated for November 7, 2023. And Grant, you were so good last week to kind of bring us up to date and act to give us more information, or...
All right. I emailed the board some information yesterday, giving a timeline that we seem to be on. Now, I'm afraid I did not see what occurred in the city council meeting last night for the city of Waterloo. I saw they had it on their agenda, and I assume they approved to initiate the local option tax election for November 7. And so that puts in train a series of events that you're involved with. By... next week, by August 15, you have a deadline to set that election for November 7, and that is really the date that Waterloo wants it and everybody else wants it. This will go into effect when the current tax sunsets at the end of 2025, and so it seems like we're well in advance of getting this done in a timely manner. But I think it just makes everybody more comfortable getting it done in plenty of time, especially if there are in any cases where it would fail, there would be time to bring the referendum back. But regardless of the motives for that timing, that's kind of what's been used the last few elections that the option tax has been held on. So the board then, after setting that date of the election, then the board has to make its decision about how it wishes to use the funding. And I sent you a little history of how the county has used its portion of the option tax since its inception. We started out by using it 100% for property tax relief. Somewhere along the line, it was modified slightly to say that it was for property tax relief in the rural fund for the unincorporated area. That's where you are levying the taxes, just in the unincorporated area of the county. And so it was worded so that it would be reducing the rural fund to zero if possible, and we did have a zero fund, a zero tax levy in the rural fund for a number of years. Then it was changed... it was in the midst of one of the five-year periods when it was sunsetting. After five years, the board decided to split that between property tax relief and roads and bridges. And so that was approved, I think, in 2008. And then when it came up, when it did sunset, it came up again in 2010. Then it remained that, and then in 2015, it was changed to sunset for 10 years, after 10 years, rather than the five years that had been used before. It is, under the law, the board's prerogative, how long, if there's going to be a sunset, how long that will be for the whole county, not just for the unincorporated areas, but for the cities as well. And I think that the board has kind of tried to act in concert with the wishes of the communities in that regard in the past, but it's ultimately your decision. You do not have to have a sunset. There are many counties and cities that do not have sunsets, but if you're going to be in consonance with, you know, past actions, you know, you would have a sunset. So another couple of little details that I may not have mentioned before. It's important to understand that there's a quirk of this law where it says that if you have contiguous cities, they all vote as a unit. They have their own different uses of the tax, but they vote as a unit as to whether it is approved or not. So Cedar Falls, Waterloo, Hudson, Evansdale, Elkhorn Heights, Raymond are all contiguous, and therefore, it's the total vote of those cities that determines whether the tax is approved for those cities or not. So for instance, you know, Cedar Falls could vote it down, but if the rest of the cities voted up, then Cedar Falls is going to continue to have the tax. The unincorporated area is voted separately. The other non-contiguous cities like Dunkerton, LaPorte City, Gilbertville, they vote separately and decide their own fate by themselves. Another little note is we have two cities, Jessup and Janesville, which are partly in Blackhawk and partly in other counties, and they took action a number of years ago so that they do not have a sunset like the rest of the counties that they are primarily in. And so this election will not be held in our portion of Jessup or Janesville, just the rest of the county. So...
Is that because they hold theirs in their larger portion because of the other... the county that they belong to?
Well, they... It's stretching my memory a little to... I remember exactly how that worked before, but they had to hold separate elections for the Bremer and Buchanan portions of their cities than the portions for the Blackhawk until they took special action to put them... put themselves into, you know, one unit. And I'm sorry, I don't want to try to remember details of that that I'm not real sure about.
That's okay. I was just curious that they have it and take advantage of it somewhat, I assume, but just...
Yes.
Handle differently then. Okay.
I have some questions. The first question I had, or first thought I had, was I'm leaning toward, I don't think we need a sunset. I would support not having a sunset and just making it permanent, per se. And I can't remember how much money we're talking annually.
Michelle, how much does it generate?
Approximately $3.5 to $3.8 million, something like that annually.
And 50% goes for secondary roads. I think this is useful. I liked it. We have challenges with funding dispatch. How do we... I mean, one thought I have, and budgets get so complicated because they're large, so many dynamics, there are autonomous boards involved. There are lack of oversight boards. Yeah. I mean, we have... I think we... obviously, we have to get this on the agenda for next week. And of course, I support it, and I also support not having a sunset clause in there.
I'm kind of inclined to not have a sunset clause in there, too. I'd want to hear, you know, from the other cities, some of the city leaders, you know, in this week, and I'll certainly reach out because they've got Laskin in the scheme, too. But it seems it's been a good use of the funds so far, and so it's...
And we can have an election anytime. Is that correct, Grant, as far as whether you set the sunset or you don't? When you say some have set a sunset of 10 years, and now we're having this early?
Yes, if you want to change the use of the tax, you can hold an election just to change that without changing the sunset.
If there is... is there a mechanism, if there's no sunset, that the voters themselves can petition to call for an election?
To force a sunset, yes.
Okay.
Was there any opposition, or does anyone recall as far as when we set that? You said earlier on, I know we talked about it being a five-year term, and then it was elongated to the 10. Do we... was there any public input that anybody remembers, I guess, that did or didn't? Do we, was there any public input that anybody remembers, I guess, that did or didn't like it, I guess?
I don't remember a lot of discourse about it. I have records of the votes that I can share with you that, you know, it continued to pass. Sorry, there was something else I wanted to mention. Oh. Dan, when you talked about the possible uses of the funds for reducing property taxes, it's important to note that we have, for many years, used this, the property tax reduction in the rural fund exclusively. We started out, it was in the general fund, but it was switched to the rural fund. That's, you know, definitely your call when you say property tax relief. That can be the general fund, the rural fund, or wherever you have property taxes levied. But it has been the tradition for many years to do it exclusively in the rural fund.
And I assume that's because it is where we're drawing, like, say, the funding from our unincorporated area, correct?
Yeah, I think that's the main reasoning for it. But, you know, everybody pays county taxes, everybody in the county pays county taxes, and, well, I don't know. That's, yes, the reason for it is that it's levied in the unincorporated area.
Well, I'm intrigued to maybe do a little digging and research, too, on what other counties are they using those dollars?
I did, I did ask about a little bit this morning, and I know I didn't give him probably a fair chance to even to consider it. But I said, if there are different allocations, you know, the 20% or I said 95% versus 5%, all kinds of things you could do and not knowing what other counties do with it. And he said, you can, as far as the allocation is up to you, but...
Yeah, I think we can probably find online with the Department of Revenue or Management a listing of how all the counties and cities use their local option tax.
I'd be curious, oh, I'm sorry.
No.
I'd be curious to hear maybe from Kathy a little bit about, you know, we got to a point this year that we were starting to fund projects, larger projects without bonding, which is nice, the interest that saved. So I just wonder if more of this was going into roads. Are there, just how much would we increase that capacity for taking on more projects without having to do it with that or?
Wonderful question. It looks like she's up for a challenge.
I just, I just put together...
No, I know.
Put together a few slides for you, and I will provide you with any information you ask for. But I did want to just, again, express how huge the impact is on our road system. Like Michelle said, this is data from Michelle. The county receives like $3.75 million annually from the local option sales tax. Half of that goes to, to be used for roads and bridges. Traditionally, it had been placed in a debt service fund. So in the last 15 years, the last 13 to 15 years, we've been able to pave over 50 miles of pavement. Yes, we would have, I would say that's been an additional 50, excuse me, 80 miles of roadways, over $50 million that we've gotten from the use of local option sales tax, over $50 million in the last 15 years. So we've resurfaced over, I think it's between 80 and 90 miles that we probably wouldn't have done otherwise. That also includes replacing a few bridges. But mostly, we spent the money on road projects because they were shovel-ready. We could get these projects done quickly and out the door. I also will say that those pavements are aging. Right now, we have a really good road system and bridge system. Most of our, a good portion of our roads are in excellent to good condition right now. In the next five to 10 years, we're going to see those pavements that we've resurfaced in the last five to 10 years. They will, of course, get older in their life. Our asphalt pavements last 20 to 22 years. They experience aging. Our environment is worse on our roadways, of course, for our county roads than the traffic is. So they're going to age, and that will require some maintenance to be done on those roads. Right now, we are in good condition because of all the bond money we've spent. And looking at our bridges, we're also in pretty good condition right now with our bridges. This is just a slide I showed you when I gave you our five-year plan. We have 139 bridges in good condition. I would strongly encourage you to continue on with the 50% of the local option sales tax going to roads and bridges. We are seeing a large increases in bridge construction costs as well as road construction costs. They are tracking very similarly over the last 10 years. We're both seeing about a 30% increase. This slide shows 30% increase in slab bridge construction, which is primarily what we're building on the county road system, our slab bridges. 28% increase in construction costs in the last 10 years. And then roadway costs have also increased about 28% as well. Our equipment costs have gone up just really quite a bit in the last few years. Of course, due to COVID, you know about some of those issues as well as I do, the supply chain issues. Equipment costs, motorator costs have gone up by 45% in the last 10 years. Truck costs have gone up 14%. And then another really large cost that we don't often think about is our aggregate costs, the amount of rock we're placing on the gravel roads. We still like to place 10 miles, 10 to 20 miles every year. Our aim is to do 20 miles in every greater district. We have nine greater districts. That's 180 miles of rock that we are placing every year just to re-rock, to maintain the road system. Our costs to do that have gone up $200,000 in the last 10 years. So that's about a 41% increase, and that's just for our gravel road system. So these are good reasons to go with the 50% increase, excuse me, continue that 50% to the roads and bridge system with a local option sales tax. So please continue, support it. In time, we will be, we will be needing to resurface, rehabilitate those roads that we have spent quite a bit of money on the last five to 10 years. Can also consider increasing it to 60%. Yes, go ahead, Tom.
The board requested at the time, seems that we did have some minor opposition when we first implemented that years ago. The board requested that any road projects that was funded through this local option sales tax, that you would put up a sign stating so, so they could see that their money was working. Are we still doing that?
We have not done that in the last few years. After, about five years ago, we stopped with the bond program, so we stopped putting those signs up. Gruney wrote admittedly, we could have put a sign out there for that, but we, I'm sorry, we didn't put those signs out. But we had been up until about five or six years ago.
So you mentioned the additional 10% would give you about $375,000.
I'm sorry, that should be half of that. That would be about $1.8 million. Or 1.8,000, $180,000 more. The 10% more would be, that 375 was looking at all of the local option sales tax. I'm sorry, that's a typo.
Total, being 60% total.
Yeah.
Okay.
So half of that would give us 10% more. Sure, we could buy another truck, we could buy a part, you know, portion of a motorator. We could do preventative maintenance. There are many uses that we could spend an additional 10% of funding on.
So we've got until the end of the month at least to consider. Next week, we have to set the date for the election, for November 7. We have till the end of the month to determine sunset versus not, or, and the other, what other counties are doing, looking at that. Probably in the next week here or so, as well as, I guess, if we were to change the allocation or wanted to, or some benefit in it.
I'd like to give some consideration to the 60% because I think, you know, it's a point of pride that you can be driving around on our roads and without even looking at a sign, you can tell whether you've left Blackhawk County or entered it because the roads are better here significantly. And there's been so much work that was done over the years to really kind of turn that situation around. And now we've got all these roads, and they're going to be aging, as Kathy said. And the cost to maintain those is going to be more. So I think I'm going to be thinking about that 10% this week for sure, that 10% increase potentially.
Maybe, Michelle, if you could just prepare something that demonstrates over the last, let's say, 10 years, how much has that, how much has this fund increased every year? Because to hear costs are going up, yes, but I think there's also revenues are going up
Yeah.
because of just the nature of sales tax.
I think I started with 2008, but I think the revenue's nearly doubled since 2008. And then we also aren't having to pay interest any longer. So we are able to devote more to actual construction for the roads. And I put a few points on the handout I had about if you choose to increase the local option tax for roads, what we might need to do to make up for that. Because we're using all the 50% that's allocated to the rural fund to reduce those taxes. So we would either have to reduce expenses, which, and there aren't very many in the rural fund. It's uniform patrol, basic is the big one, other than roads, and then just a few other small things. And dispatch being one of those things, that is where we pay our share of that, too. So those, those are the things that we'd have to think about. You could, we do have a little bit of room under the rural levy cap, so you could raise that slightly. And I didn't calculate the dollars. I should have done that. Or you could shift things back to the basic levy and increase that levy. But it would likely, it would likely mean either increasing levies or reducing expenses somehow because we do allocate the full pot.
Well, and I know you've touched on, too, just recently, because one of my questions was, we say it's property tax relief or a reduction of that. And I asked Grant, I know, like, what does that mean we do with it? I mean, what happens to that funding? Obviously, the roads and bridges, it's very obvious that we spend it for that. But how do we reduce property tax?
Because we fund, because we fund, I think it's about 1.3 million. I'll have to check that. But that's how we pay for the rural deputies from the sheriff's office, so...
Then we'd have to tax for it.
That would be an option.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That'd be an option.
Reduce, reduce costs or, yeah.
Reduce costs or increase the tax levy to continue funding the sheriff's office and dispatch. That's also where we pay for the rural libraries. Well, I shouldn't say just rural libraries, the library allocation. We do fund our county planning and zoning out of here, so I've included it in that expense chart I gave you. But that actually pays for itself roughly, so there isn't a tax levy on that. We pay for our emergency management allocation out of there. And that's, that's about it.
Is it, is it possible, I don't know if we have easy access to data, can I show the hotspots of where collections are kind of the highest in these parts and give a better sense?
They really don't allocate this way. The, it's interesting how local option tax is calculated. It's based partly on population and partly on property values from a year, a long time ago, when it began. So it's, it's a really, the calculation doesn't have a whole lot to do with how it works.
All right, because we can't, we can't just look at it and say, like, okay, the folks in Washburn are generating a lot of property or a lot of sales tax at this place here, okay?
No, so it's getting allocated to our rural based on our rural population. I think that's how we get our amount, but it's also based on property value, and it's a countywide. So even, even looking at the cities of Waterloo and Cedar Falls, it isn't. Waterloo doesn't collect the tax based on things paid for in Waterloo only. They get a share of it countywide based on their property value as a proportion of total county property value and their population, so it's...
Okay. I wondered how that works.
Yeah, it's, I couldn't believe it when I finally figured that out a few years ago. It's complicated.
It's worse than that, actually.
Yeah, it is. I know. I'm simplifying a little.
We're looking behind the curtain and we're seeing how sausage is made or something.
It's ugly.
Was that supposed to have been enlightening somehow? Well, one of the questions I said, and I saw in there, it was interesting with the election back in 91, or I think Grant had talked about, too, where the first one, it failed in the unincorporated areas. And it was like six months later, then they had it again and approved it. So when, just in case there was a failure, like you said, the timing of this one has a lag or something like that. But is there a time limit they have to wait between, like, if something, measure failed, and then we would want to do it again, or if other communities wanted to do it again?
There is not, and that's something that I checked into specifically a couple of months ago and made sure with the Secretary of State's office. There could be another election in, you know, a month or so. Well, I shouldn't say that. There are all the deadlines that have to be gone through, just like the ones we did for this. But there are some referendums under the law that you have to wait, like, six months if it fails before you bring it again. But that's not the case with this.
Okay. Well, I just thought that's important because sometimes it's an educational program you kind of need to run sometimes so the public is know aware of what you're doing if something fails. And apparently, like, in that case, they did all agree or saw the benefit of it shortly after that election and then held one, so that's good. Thank you. So is there anything anyone else has to say or would like to ask or? I, thanks for the information from everyone. I said Kathy, yours as well. I didn't know what you were presenting, but helpful.
I will provide language for next week's agenda for setting the date. And then when you get an idea of how you want to word it, I'll get your language for the end of the month.
Okay. Because I assume, or you assume, we all assumed that Waterloo passed theirs last night. And that was one question I had last week, was if Waterloo didn't pass it, then we wouldn't have this at all. We wouldn't be doing it at all. We'd be running it out.
That's right. And I don't know if anybody here can tell us it.
Yes, it is.
Did it? Was it unanimous? Great. It's always nice when it's that, but yeah, I was going to say...
Did they, I didn't hear them say the formula they passed. So they did make that change.
And it had been, had there's been 50/50?
It was...
It had been 100 for roads and, okay, so that was the change. It wasn't as large as I thought it might be. Okay. Any other questions, comments, or anybody?
So by next week, we just have to have the resolution of setting the date?
Yeah.
And then by the end of the month, we need to have agreement on sunset and no sunset and stuff, okay?
Yeah, so we've got probably a couple of weeks for that, and we can put it on either week.
One more fairly academic point. You can also change the amount. It doesn't have to be 1%. I think that's kind of a given, but that is something that you have to have on the ballot, how much it will be. But it's always been 1%.
So we can increase it or decrease it?
I think the 1% is a maximum.
Yeah.
Oh, it couldn't be decreased but not increased? Oh, okay. Good to know. Set ourselves up for failure right away.
Lynda, I believe, if I recall, the first time that I was involved in it would have been in the early 2000s. I believe the board was going to change it for not only tax relief but also for road use. Some of the arguments we had from the rural area, why were they, why did they have to pay for the rural roads when the urban people, including every board member, drives on the gravel roads? So they felt they were being kind of singled out a little bit of paying an extra tax. So that was one problem or concern that they had because we were going to go to the 50/50 formula or change it eventually. So I know that was an argument that, because I believe somebody said, Michelle or Grant said, it's exclusive tax for rural only, only the sales tax.
Yes, the property tax relief specifically for the rural fund, yeah.
So I think the way we sold it was, we're still going to keep X amount for property relief, and we're going to help fix the roads up. And the board had the, basically, just said... And the board had the, basically just said, hey, if you don't pass it, a lot of your roads aren't going to get fixed because of the shortage of monies and so forth. So I believe that was one of the reasons why it did pass, but it, there was some grumblings on it from the rural people and I can understand that.
True. We don't all agree. Most of the time, right? Yeah. Well, thank you, Tom. I was going to say, a reason, go ahead Kathy, I was going to say a reason to consider a larger percentage.
I need to make a comment on that. The heavy loads are taking place on the rural roads, especially now with the past legislature from the last few years ago with enacting the all systems permit, allowing those loads go, now the legal loads with the all systems permit to go up to 12 and 1/2%, which was the harvest proclamation. That is now permanent if farmers, mainly this was for farmers, if they get an all systems permit, they can go up to 92,000 pounds now. They are the ones who are driving the heavy loads out on the county roads. We are having to rewrite many of our bridges because of this legislation that was being pushed by the farmers. So they are the ones, they are seeing a benefit for, for sure, by us resurfacing and rebuilding our bridges.
Yeah. Yeah, appreciate you pointing that out because like you said, that's just changed recently and like in the last year.
All right.
Yeah, that is, thank you. Lots to consider. If there is nothing more to discuss, we'll move on to the discussion, possible board action, American Rescue Plan Act, county projects. Is there anyone that has a question, comment, or needs it to update us on anything? No? Hope you're ready.
The only thing I wanted to mention is, I sent an email about this. The ARPA committee is not planning at this point to continue to hold regularly scheduled meetings. We can schedule a meeting anytime when it's necessary for some function, but I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that. I did send an email, I believe, in the last week about that.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Should we continue to leave this on, like you say, weekly, or would we like to just put a possible board action monthly, kind of have an item on monthly? Because we can always add it, we know, every week.
I mean, I'm okay just putting it on when we, when we know we're ready to have something.
Some update. Because I know we.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anybody, any objections to that? All right, we'll do that then. Thank you. Any reports or information from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
A moved second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, same sign, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.